We'll open the meeting for Monday, November 13th. Entertain motion to accept the agenda as may be amended. And Michael gave me a change at number 10.
Okay.
He'd like to take out Arizona missions, put in ERU transfer agreement.
Okay. I'll second that motion with those changes.
Yeah.
Chris?
Yep. I agree.
Anything else? All in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to do the minutes? Because you guys did two of the three meetings.
Yeah, alright, I'll take it from here. Motion to approve the minutes of October 23rd. Chris and I and Michael.
Steve.
This was an actual meeting? This is when Steve was out at one time?
Yeah.
Okay, in seven years or something like that? I didn't see anything in there. Chris, did?
Did you?
No, I didn't see either. I'm good with it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, it was just us two, so.
No, we can't vote on it.
What? You can't?
We can't vote on it.
Yeah, yeah. Motion to approve the minutes of the afternoon of Monday, October 23rd, which is just Chris and I. And once again, it was, um, it was a TIF discussion. And we did go into executive session at 3:01 for the TIF discussion. And we came out at 4:01 and there was nothing, no action taken. You second that motion to approve these minutes?
Yeah. Yes, I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
October 30th is just another Monday meeting at 3 o'clock. We did throw into this one, and Steve, you were here. So we did put into this the slope stability contract for East Mountain Road. That was where there was some washouts or whatever. Did we lose? Chris, are you still there?
My computer died.
Give it a second, it's coming back.
Yeah.
Let me answer your question, you're not close. [laughing] Today's people said the road's slippery.
Yeah, right out front here is a little slippery.
They're on, we're on it.
Yeah, I know. Is it not charging?
It wasn't for some reason longer than that four.
Is it charging now?
I think so.
Okay. Does it have the charge sign on it, or?
It's black.
I'm not a Dell boy.
It's coming back, though.
Yeah.
It forces me to restart.
Yeah.
We're getting there.
Good, I have time to turn.
Two minutes. Is that the same one from earlier?
Yeah. Baby in it.
I'm leaving, 1 o'clock is the morning. I've got a water issue.
I'm going to Santa, I'm going to Costa Rica for a week. And then, of course, it's like, I've been telling the inn, Mike's been helping out, but there's something leaking, something leaking. They're, no, 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 no. And then I told Mike, go up to room 206, and he said, how'd you know? I was in there in June, they sort of fixed it.
He's been asking, pick the lottery numbers.
Yeah. Alright, hang in there, everybody. Well, they can't hear you. I mean them. Peg TV guy's like, I gotta eat, come on, get this thing going. So they may have had like a handle that, well, it was stripped, and it was probably half a gallon a minute since, I don't know, a year, so it's finally caught up. And now the static level of the water is way down. When they turned it off on Saturday at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, by that night, or whatever, or morning, it was up to 3.7 feet, so it gained 1.7 feet of water. And then, I guess they had somebody else staying in one of the rooms as a guest that didn't know it. And when they went in this morning, it was down to 1 point, I was down to 2.5 feet, I lost another, you can't. And then you know, when you start getting Colton to deliver water, it stirs up the tank. And then they complain about. Yes, no?
Yeah, I don't know why it's not charging.
Is it plugged in down?
It's on the multibox there.
Recording in progress.
Good. Try a different outlet?
Yeah. Oh, yep, that worked.
Okay.
Sorry, are we muted or unmuted now? Muted.
Alright, we're good.
Sorry, folks, we had a little difficulty there, so.
Computer problem.
Little computer problem. So I'm back to, we didn't do anything. So October 30th, Steve, you were there.
Yeah.
This was the afternoon meeting, but we put in the stabilization, which is East Mountain Road for where the water was washing down, the vision contract, AJGA tournament agreement. And I make a motion to approve the minutes of this afternoon, that afternoon, October 30th, 3:00 PM meeting.
Yeah, I didn't have anything that wasn't in the minutes. All in favor of accepting the minutes of Monday, October 30th at 3 o'clock, please say aye.
Aye. Now we're gonna go to Monday, November 6th at 3:00 PM. And this was just Chris and I with everybody else.
The TIF stuff.
The TIF stuff or whatever. I did not see anything in here, Chris. The only, we did, we did add in at that meeting Parks and Recreation Committee appointment, where Andrew McKenna, and I'd like to say thank you for all the years that he served on the rec commission, but he needed to step down. And I'd like to thank Tiffany Hecker for stepping up and asking to take the replacement, and Chris and I appointed her that night. And I did touch bases with Steve, because we're allowed to talk about what we're gonna do on a meeting. And it was our regular afternoon meeting. All in favor of that, Chris? Aye?
Second, aye.
There we go.
So under Select Board member feedback and concerns, my only question is when they might start the trees on the bottom of the access road? So that people are aware of that.
So they starting on Monday on the west side of the road? We've been putting that out, I thought, or whatever, I just, you know.
The thing is, the machine's been there for about 10 days.
No, the machine got, the machine got there just early this week. Last week, the machine got there like.
Last week.
Thursday or Friday it got there. It hasn't been there over a week.
Yeah, we had to get, we had to get their traffic control plans approved and everything too, so that's been done, and they're gonna start tomorrow.
The excavator is only there to start pushing the trees. They're not doing any digging or anything. And they're only doing the west side of the road at this point. So, just to give them a little head start, so.
Now, are they closing the uphill lane?
They have a traffic plan in place, and so.
He's just asking, so people know.
I.
I can get that information out there, but they're gonna have signs up and everything. And they're not allowed to do work during World Cup.
Okay. Alright.
Okay. My only selectman's concern is really a comment, it's not a concern. We put in a new electric sign at the bottom of the Killington Road, which was approved. The town went to the DRB some three years ago. It took a while with COVID to get the sign in and everything. We've been playing with it. The person that installed it has been giving us different ways that it can. The first feedback we gave was right away that day was, it's scrolling too fast, slow it down, okay? Now the second feedback is, is certain colors don't really go well. And the third feedback was, is that, you know, putting too many words on one makes the letters smaller, and it's hard to read. So what we did tonight, if anyone drives by tonight, is that we did a fourth trial. And Michael and I had said, just treat it as it was, the sign before, that you can only put so many letters, like, like the same height of the letters. And if you go by there tonight or tomorrow, I wouldn't, if you're going uphill, don't head downhill to look at it tonight, it might be a little slippery. But it looks perfect tonight. Mike, did you see it on the way coming up?
I did.
And it looks like it did. And the advantage to it is, is that no one has to trudge through snow and everything like that. It looks like what it, it looks brighter and better than it did with just the letters. And we can change the sign each day, each week, and we can do it from Town Hall, and it's good, so.
Yeah, we don't have access to it yet, but we are, we will soon. George has access. I asked him to change it today, and he had it done in like 10 minutes.
He did it from his house. He did it from his house. George does live in town. And he does all the airports and hot, throughout the country or whatever. So, I mean, I just drove, I just drove up and it looks really good. What's up, Jerry?
Me? I'm a little worried about that sign. Do you think it might cause accidents, as people are coming from the post office and turning up on the access road? Are they gonna let their eyes go over to that sign rather than watching, staying in lane and not hitting the car coming down the road?
So what?
Or is it just me?
What's the difference between letters to grab somebody's attention that's been there since 1980, whatever?
Well, it did not grab our attention. This does grab our attention, and I hope it doesn't take away from the attention of driving. Now, maybe farther up the road, it would have been, I know you've made the decision, and I'm not trying to change that, but I went by it for the first time yesterday, and I, I probably drive too fast, I'm not doubting that, but I.
Which here?
I could not read it. I know you just told me it changed, but I could not read it. I had to go, you know, look right back at the road.
So that's, Jerry, that's exactly what we said, it was hard to read at that, at that font level. We've had feedback, and if you drive by tomorrow, you have my email, okay? Send me, send me your feedback on what you see now. One of the other things that we have learned is, is that we're not going to put more than one message up. It's gonna be static, it is not gonna be rolling, okay?
Okay.
So we have the chance of changing it each day, which we didn't have before. So please take a look at it tomorrow.
I will.
And then tell us what you think. And it's, it's the same size, or maybe a little bit bigger letters than it was with the placement letters. And it looks what I thought we were gonna get in the first place.
Yeah, and Jerry, we were, we were really mindful of making it short, so you really don't have to read it, you just have to glance at it, and you get to figure out what's happening.
Just like you did before.
So it's, stif, stifle.
Okay.
Stifle.
Alright, I'll go by in the morning.
Stifle, Killington World Cup, November 24th, 26th. Done.
Alright.
So take a look at it, and Jerry, I may not answer you right away, because I'm leaving for JFK at 1 o'clock this morning.
You can talk to me, Jerry.
Alright, talk to the manager.
Well, Michael, let me just say to you, I have been trying to get in touch with you.
Oh.
And it has been impossible, by phone and by email.
What email are you using?
I, Michael at Killington, I don't know, the one that I used to use, I guess.
That one is not, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's an old one, so, Jerry, you've, well, you've got.
Please put it on the website, how we can email you.
Okay.
Now, my problem's been solved, so no, no trouble there, but I really was getting a bit frustrated, so.
I apologize.
I hope no one else.
And Jerry, you've got my.
That's alright.
You have my personal, you actually have my personal cellphone, so you could call that.
Of course. [laughing] It was not that, it was not that important, so that's why I didn't want to bother you.
Oh, I'm sure it might, might have been.
So I don't have any, that was my concerns, and we answered Jerry's question underneath the selectman's concerns. Chris, do you have anything, or are you good?
Yeah, the, the only thing I'm just gonna add is, I have been talking with Ken Putnam at the bus, just to look at the possibilities of potentially having a bus run later than 11 o'clock to service staff that's not living up on the hill, and customers alike. And so he's supposed to get back with me with some concepts and see what, what would it entail and everything else. And once they find out more information, I'll bring it back to the full board.
Okay, so, yeah, this is just a rehab, the same thing like when we went and said, we had more businesses open in the summertime, and workers from down in other areas, and we ended up going from there. So I think that's it for selectman's concerns. So the next one is open public comment. You got Steve Finer with his hand up, I believe.
Yeah, I just, you answered, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
You answered most of my questions about the sign. Mike and I had talked the other day, and I think you're, you're in the right path, so. It's, it's an adjustment. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Do you have something that's not on the agenda? Patrick?
It's with the sign, but that's on the, that's also on the agenda, or has it been removed?
Okay.
Mine's regarding the sign as well, but I can wait.
Okay. Alright. Okay, so liquor control, Peggy.
Okay, I gave you all a list.
Yep.
Tonight, we have four businesses applying for licenses. The applicable fees to the town have been received. I'd like to start with the renewals. Those out of order, all those.
Color.
That's it. The blue one. The Graybonnet Inn, it's a renewal for the outside consumption. It's the same as last year.
Make a motion to move forward, the town clerk or assistant clerk, whatever, to move, the clerk's office to move forward with the gray bonnet for an outside consumption permit, renewal?
Okay, next I have.
All?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next I have the North Star Cafe.
So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the North Star Cafe LLC for a first class and a third class, and their renewals also?
Yes.
Chris can, yeah, Chris can, second.
I'll abstain.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Alright.
Third, we have the Roland Rooster, first and third, the Skyship.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the clerk's office to move forward with the Rolling Rooster at the Skyship for first and third. And it's a, they were in there last year, so it should have been a renewal.
It is a renewal.
As I was gonna say, they're not, they're not checked as renewed.
Yeah, okay.
I know, I don't know why the fourth one, it's a renewal.
Okay.
We're just voting to have you move forward anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And Free Rider.
Abstain.
Okay. As you know, Hops on the Hill has closed at the Mountain Green, and we welcome the Free Rider LLC for a first and third. We have Avi Shemtov on Zoom, he's attending on behalf of the Free Rider.
So do we have Green Mountain, or, what is it called? It's Mountain Green?
Mountain Green.
Do we have anything from Mountain Green saying that?
I've given Michael a copy of the release.
Okay, so Mountain Green has given a release. That's, that's the one thing that we asked for. I'll make a motion to move forward with the Free.
Yeah.
Free Rider.
Free Rider LLC for a first and third, I'll bet, Mountain Green?
Yeah, second, I don't have any.
Yeah.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye. Do you wanna say anything?
I have questions.
Um, I guess I would just say thank you.
Okay.
Very much. Looking forward to being part of the, the community up there in Killington. That was easy. Thank you guys so much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping in.
Of course. We look forward to it.
Okay.
That's it.
And we have Mr. Jepson with Chamber of Economic Development from Rutland Region.
Thank you, I know that Jim needs to get on vacation here. Brief.
Jim still has a couple hours worth of work before he gets in that car.
Each year, you give me just a little bit of time to come and explain to you, and I've got some extras here. If you pass it out, it's a share.
Take what you need. With all the help they give us, he can have whatever time he needs.
Initiative wise, and Killington has been with us since the very beginning. We're now in our eighth year of the regional marketing initiative to attract people here to our region. And Killington certainly doesn't have a problem with that, and during COVID, you obviously know that your population doubled. Not every population is like that, and most businesses in the Rutland Region continue to need skilled employees. And so our focus is on just that. So the information that you have in your packet shows some statistics over the last couple of years about our marketing initiative and what we call the concierge program. Concierge program is a program that connects a person that works for us with people that have questions about the region. That's Carly, and she is busy all the time. If you look at the statistics on the right-hand side of the page, you're gonna see that what we call our active leads, that you can see the active leads down the side there, and we've pretty much doubled our active leads in the last year. And we've done that by having particular promotions, and those promotions are influenced by people that wanna come visit Killington. And we have had weekend getaways, both for biking and for the foliage. And with each one of those, you'll see the statistics about people who put their names in the hat to try and come here. That's the end of the day. The beginning of the day is we get in front of 500,000 people around the United States about Rutland County. And Killington certainly is at the top of our list of places that people wanna go. You've been, again, you've been with us from the beginning. If you turn that over on the back, you're gonna see some other statistics. We are keeping track of, are these folks couples, and do they have children? What kind of jobs do they have? Where are they going to be working once they come here? And this campaign is financed by municipalities such as yourself, our large businesses, and our organization. We come back to you every year to say, would you like to continue to contribute? In the past, you have contributed significantly, and we appreciate that. Last year, I believe, it was $5,000, and that really helped us with the campaign. Total budget's about $150,000. A lot of that is personnel and social media marketing. Killington Resorts involved, the waste, Rutland Regional Medical Center, Velco, all of the large businesses that you would expect.
So I have a few questions, anyway. When you're doing these welcoming to the area, you, what restaurants, because you hold places that you go to, that the people are coming in? I know personally that I think one or two have been held on this mountain.
Absolutely. So we do welcoming dinners when they come up to the mountain. The Killington Grand is where the people stay. So we really like to show off the region, and coming to the mountain is obviously a good place. We have a scavenger hunt, however, that we send them everywhere, Jim, not just to Killington.
Yeah.
So they go to all 27 towns, and if they get to all 27 towns, take a picture, or we say to take a picture, they get a big prize at the end of the day. Not, not everyone.
On their way to 251.
I'm sorry?
They're on their way to 251.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So we want people to see the county, because some folks would like to live in Killington, others would like to live in the city, others would like to be out in Middletown Springs, where we were the other night. And they would love it if I said, and they just opened their brand-new Town Hall in Middletown Springs.
Awesome.
It's a place to go check out.
Wow.
So. You'll see the budget, where the money comes from, where the money's going. You'll see an annual report that I'll send along to Mike to include in your annual report, if you'd like to do that. We would love to have you come to our annual meeting, which is tomorrow night at the Mint Maker Space from 5 to 7. And we would love to have someone from Killington there, I think Mike's coming, maybe Chris Carr, maybe Steve Penner.
Mint Makers?
The Mint, the Mint Space, yeah, on the quantity, uh, quality lane.
Quality Inn. Quality, what, what, where is that? Quality Lane.
Quality Lane.
So that's.
Can you attack it, there should be?
Quality Lane is the road that leads down towards IFW Web, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Like an offshoot, whatever. So, yeah.
Quality Lane's past, further up the road, the railroad tracks.
Okay.
No, because that's where I got my.
Yeah. Okay. It's in the area. So I cannot make it, but I really hope that Steve and Chris will show up to it. Chris?
Yeah, I'm doing everything I can to make it. I am, just trying to deal with a sick household right now, so I'm doing everything I can to get there.
They get 6 o'clock tomorrow night?
So 5 to 6 is tours of the Mint Maker Space. And you'll also have an opportunity to see Rutland Area Robotics showing off their robotic skills. And then 6 o'clock is the annual meeting, and we hope that that would be when someone could be.
So now, like Lyle, on this thing here, this, this part is just one part of what you folks do at the Cedar Group? What you're showing, the budget?
Yep, so that's only part of our budget. Obviously, we have other things that we do. We have a revolving loan fund, we help businesses, we have the Hub Co-Works, which is brand-new and open. It is a co-working facility, 22,000 square feet with high-tech classrooms. We're, we're starting a business incubator within that facility. We teamed up with the nation's third-largest business incubator called Generator. If you wanna look them up, they're the real deal. They have $1.5 billion in assets, and we hope that they'll bring some of that money to our region.
And I was getting more towards the part of like, you know, you all say Jim was the energy person for TIF, but without your connection to the state representative, I would have never reached, or the town would have never reached, Megan Sullivan. So that's what I was getting at, is that you do have a lot of contacts. The town has called on you in the beginning of the TIF program to set up Zoom calls with many of our Vtrans and, and state and housing senators to come into these meetings. It has been huge for this town to go from there.
We, we try to connect the dots when it makes sense. And so we're willing to help, and very interested in helping in any way we can.
Chris, do you have anything else?
No, I just, you know, I think what Lyle has done is surely helped grow this region as a whole, and exposed people to a lot more things, you know? Especially to industries that are, you know, trying to bring people into the area, and they get a good flavor of what the Rutland region as a whole can offer. So I applaud the efforts that he's done with it.
Thanks, Chris.
So how much are we putting into this at this point?
5,000 a year, and I've got an invoice that we're processing for Lyle from last year.
From last year for 5,000. I'd like to up it to six. I mean, for the amount of work that is being done from this group here, for not just the whole region, but really zooming in on us, and we're gonna be calling on him a lot here in the near future again, because we're going for the rest of the grants, for the road going up and down, the, the rest of the water, whatever, and I just think it's a great thing to do.
Six enough?
Chris? He's asking if six is enough. Do you have any input?
No, I, I would agree, I think if, you know.
It's a 20%.
The budgets are tight, I think.
Okay.
To give enough, to, for us to up it a little bit, I think is a good, is a good lift for it. And I think, again, Killington itself has received a disproportionate amount of attention through all this process. And I think we owe great gratitude to Lyle for everything being done on, so I would owe great gratitude to Lyle for everything being done on. So I would agree with it.
So you have a second for six?
You have a second for six.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. And don't attribute too much to me because it's about a team effort and it's about everybody putting in, at that effort along the way. You are the model of team effort when you look at how the town and the business community and the resort have come together. I get the pleasure of seeing Mr. Happ about once a week. He always has asked for input, as you might expect.
It's the paper delivery.
Yeah. It's not just a paper delivery.
That's how I get into people's doors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lyle.
Thanks, Lyle.
Thank you, Lyle.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Next item, Rutland Emergency Management Committee Member Appointment.
This should be a quick one. So all I'm looking for is an appoint, is for the board to appoint myself and the Fire Chief to the Rutland Emergency Management Committee.
Still moved?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you need to mention anything?
You didn't know anything about it.
Okay. No, you guys have talked. Okay.
Just makes him a voting member.
Yes. Chris just seconded with a yep.
All in favor of Mike and Paul being appointed as, to the management committee? Please say aye.
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 Okay. I thought we did the driveway permit last time, but are we-
No, we said we, no, we said to put one together.
Yep.
Yep, and I have. And not only have I put a driveway permit together, but inside this, I included E911 application. So kind of a two-bird with one-stone deal. I don't have a draft to show online. I just have hard copies here. You know, in, in general, there's, there's just, there's more information required from the property owner than there was originally. And, and I also don't have it involved, but a schematic of the state driveway standard will, will be a part of this application for the, for the builder to reference. Also new to the application is that it will be reviewed by the Fire Chief, the Foreman, and there will be a post-construction inspection performed by the Foreman or the Public Works Director.
Okay, so that's on the second page there.
On the second page, yeah.
The first page is, is just the application. The second page is the award letter.
So now, looking at this, and it's $125 is the application fee. I believe it was like $25 prior, which hadn't been changed in a long time, okay? And then it's $15 a page for the recording of whatever documents. You're sending the town manager, you're sending the Fire Chief, and you're sending the road foreman out to take a look at this, to come to consensus of what COVID size has to be put in, and then go through everything, and then go back and look at it again. This is the first process of really opening up a property. And, and it is saying there's a 911 address sign also. And the 911 address signs have to get changed in price anyway, because when we order them, we've been selling them now for $15. They're costing us $15 or more right now. So I, being a person that will be coming to the town with a driveway cut at some point here in the next two years or whatever, I just think $125 is too little. I really, sitting in the desk and knowing-
Jim.
Go ahead.
Now, I just, here's, one of the things, Jim, you gotta consider in this. First of all, we're lifting the permit fee, okay? I agree all this work is being done, but we are going to generate more tax revenue from a property being built and developed, okay? And so I, I think I would take some baby steps before I take large steps. And if I remember correctly, the application fee before was not even covering the recording fees.
No, it was. It was all, it was, it was, it was including the recording fees, but it was at $15 and it was getting kind of confusing because they started going to two pages on some from previous and we didn't have a change. So I'm just, Chris, this is me throwing out where I stand on it. I mean, you know, it's, it's, some of these things are just one drive-
They're not just where I stand.
There's really one driveway cut, okay, for like me getting onto a 45 vehicle lot, okay? And then after that, it's not a driveway for every, for a private or whatever. It's one on, this is to, onto a town highway or road. So-
I would agree with it, but I, I just, we should have been doing this all along, to be really honest with you.
Right.
We should be inspecting and we should be following through with it. I think moving our fees up slightly, it does cover some of the costs associated. But in the long run, the town is going to gain revenue from something being developed there. And so I don't want just every, every time someone turns around, we're gonna have our hand out because they're also going to be coming into you for zoning per, for construction. They're gonna come in for zoning permit for their sewer, you know, connection, all these other things. I think we have to be a little careful how far we go. Is $125 or 250 gonna make a big deal?
To go from 25 to 125 is enough for me.
Okay. So Steve's agreeing with you. So I have a motion anyway to approve it as is, okay?
Okay.
So all in favor of approving the application fee at 125, recording fee at $15 a page? Please say aye.
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 All right. And East Mountain Road?
Yeah. So these, these both are actually, actually ordinance changes. So, so I thought we'd go ahead and knock this one out as well. It, it was like my second board meeting as town manager where we changed some, well, where the town changed some of the speed limits. And I, I think East Mountain Road was missed. So I've got the, the traffic studies included in your packets.
Yep.
So the, the recommendation here is for the speed limit to change from 25 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour along the entire length of the road, East Mountain.
That's on East Mountain Road. It's 25 miles an hour, pretty much, the whole-
The ski bridge.
To the ski bridge.
I didn't even know that.
How do you go 25 miles an hour uphill?
And is Whit good with this?
I'm good with that, yes.
Okay.
Why would we, question, why would we increase it? Like, is there, is there a need to increase it?
So we had a study done on East Mountain Road, Killington Road, and River Road. And the study lowered in some sections with the, what they have to follow, okay? And it actually raised it in this area here.
Right.
So I'm not the study person.
It, so-
I'm all, I'm all for, you know, if, if the study's saying it needs to be slower, totally get that. But if it's saying it could be faster, doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be faster. I mean, there's nothing bad there, but residential and it's kind of windy roads on close, so why would we want to increase the, the limit if that would increase?
So it's saying here that the 85th percentile of speed is already 42.8 miles an hour.
Yeah, I agree. That doesn't, that doesn't make it's right. It just means people speed.
Yeah.
But if we're, if we're, you know, people are having concerns about accidents all around town, we're talking about putting in speed, speed camera, not cameras, but the, the signs, why would we kind of go the opposite direction on this instead of just saying, oh, it could be 30, it could be 30, it's 25? Leave it at 25.
One of the issues is the speed limits, which is very hard to enforce. It's also hard for the moving public to see the, the speed change. So on that same road there?
On that same road.
Yeah, East Mountain, that's what he's saying, East Mountain Road. It's 25 in one section and 30 in another.
35 in another.
35 in another. So we're coming down on one section. I thought it was 30 anyway all, I thought it was 35, I think, all along. But it's 30, it's 35 miles an hour in one section and 25 miles in the other section. And this study or whatever is just saying, make the whole road 30 miles an hour.
Just put it in the middle.
Just putting it in the middle.
It actually, so the study in short says the recommended maximum speed limit of 30 miles per hour is safe and reasonable for both directions, considering the roadway geometrics and the residential nature of abutting land use. The 30 mile per hour recommendation is lower than the 85th percentile, which is generally preferred in setting speed limits. However, taking into further consideration other factors, including crash history, the limited line of sight along the many curves and dips engraved along this roadway, and the narrow setbacks of the abutting roadside development, the establish, establishment of a 30 mile per hour speed limit is reasonable. The town may need to employ additional traffic calming measures and/or greater enforcement to ensure compliance with the proposed speed limit.
So the recommendation.
So the 35 mile an hour, put fingers in your ear, police officer. Everybody's probably doing that eight to nine miles an hour, whatever, okay? So they're doing 45 and this thing is saying 42.8 is the 85th. You know, the other section of 25, I didn't know it was 25, okay? So probably they were doing the 40, whatever, okay? So we're just, you know, the study is telling us to go to 30. And I'm making a motion to approve that at this point. And, and then also you threw in here on, so it's the two sections of East Mountain Road, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So both of these are ordinance amendments, which means if you want a cheaper driveway permit, you gotta get one in the next 60 days because neither one of these go into effect until 60 days from today's date.
And-
They have to be posted this.
And if you want to go to a town vote-
Yeah.
They can, might as well tell the public what they can do.
You can trigger a special meeting. 5% of the, of the registered voters can trigger, can trigger a special meeting.
I, I agree with that. The reality is, I don't think it's going to change what people are doing on that road. I think the optics of it kind of goes against what the town is probably wanting to move towards because they want, you know, want to lower the speed over by, where, well, if we can get a town village over by the deli on the new town hall. And, you know, on the flats, we had someone going, what, 90? Yeah, 99. Someone on Axis Road going 80. So it's kind of weird look for the town to be like, hey, but East Mountain Road, five more miles an hour there.
But what section is 20, what section is 35, Whit?
Bear Mountain Down.
Bear Mountain Down, which is the more-
The curvy part, ski bridge.
Which, which is, so the ski bridge down to is 35 miles an hour, which is more of the curvy stuff that you're talking about, okay? That's more of. So we're lowering the speed limit at that section to 30 miles an hour. And then from Foster Farm or whatever, because that's where the town or roundabout to the, to the ski bridge, we're, we're saying that should go from 25 to 30. And I can tell you that driving up Bear Mountain Road, because of all the damage that was up there, driving from the skyship, I don't even know if your trucks can hold it at 25, Ricky.
Yeah, you can actually.
Yeah. Going downhill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just have to shift down.
Well, yeah, you guys are shifting down like a regular-
Depends on who's driving, too.
Yeah. I mean, going uphill at 25 miles an hour. So, I mean, I made a motion. Chris, you gonna second it?
Yeah, I'm seconding it. I think it was good discussion, but I feel having consistency out there all the way through is-
Yeah, that's good.
Is fine for us.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the recommendation to 30 miles an hour for the total of East Mountain Road? Please say aye.
Aye. My last comment on this here is it's 60 days anyway. So you're gonna be putting ourselves into January? So we're not gonna be putting posts in in January?
If we have the posts in now, we can switch the signs. Oh, that's not really a big deal.
Okay. All right. So-
As long as it's not sustainable.
And then once again, if somebody wants to go out and get 5% of the voters, they're welcome too. And we'll put it up on the town vote in March or whatever, right? As long as, yeah, because they have 60 days. It's only November now. So December, January, Jan, like the end of January is the cutoff.
There's like a timeline where it would fall into the special, into the regular me, into the regular town meeting. But if not, we would have to host a special town meeting.
Right. But I think if somebody came up in the next three or four weeks, we can work it into the, so.
I think the appeal period is 45 days.
Okay. So do you have the ERU transfer agreement?
I, I do. So after a good bit of research, we, we did verify that Andrew Geta has two ERUs at his property on Anthony Way. Hang in there because it's kind of confusing here. But Andrew has two ERUs with the town. He wants to give one over to Gore Investments LLC, which is across the road. They've already worked with Route 4 Sewer on this. So Route 4 Sewer has already made the changes. And, and now the town, and now Andrew and Oleg are requesting that the town make the changes. So what, what we're looking for is just a motion to, to allow Andrew Geta to transfer one ERU to Gore Investment LLC.
Just kind of as a note, as, as it pertains to the fire district stuff, we only approve transfers that go through either a sale or they have to be same owner. And that's to stop people from holding ERUs and trading them outside of it. But if there's obviously a connection there, I don't know how it works in this district, just as a point, but might be something you want to consider for the future.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good thought.
So on this district, it really is up to the Alpine District, which is Frank, right?
He did it.
And it's not up to us or whatever, you know? So, I mean, I think we, I recommend that, that discussion that Chris is talking about. But Frank, you, you spoke with Frank and he already did the change?
Not only did I speak with Frank, but I got Frank's spreadsheet of all of his ERUs. And it does show that, that, that Andrew has one with Frank, but two with the town. So they've already taken the steps with Frank. So they, they, he just wants to reduce that number to one with the town, give it to Oleg.
I would, I would make a motion, we, you know, let this go through as such. I know there's a, it just seems like there is a, a real mess between ERUs with the town and between what's with the district. And it's, and everywhere, every property down there, there's an odd number or something wasn't recorded right or transferred, everything else. But I would, anyway, I would make a motion that we approve this one.
I'm gonna second it and then I'll comment. This is your first, Michael, this is your first ERU on the Alpine slash Town of Killington. I want to say thanks because there's, I could go back to all the managers after Dave, okay? Some of them didn't know that the town manager was in charge. And then, and then we were just, they were just switching ERUs without going to Frank. So thank you for reading the, the rules and the regulations and following it up. So I second Chris's motion.
Yeah. All in favor of the, okay, the transfer agreement? Please say aye.
Aye.
And is someone here from VHB?
No one is here from VHB. We discussed this at a previous select board meeting. There was an, a request for an amendment of $49,680. I did a good bit of research on, on why that was included in this blanket Phase 1 contract. And there is some history. So the, the contract had to be amended for the USDA loan. So there was kind of a combination of costs. So, but the amendment, I mean, overall, the amendment of $49,680 includes services that VHB wasn't providing before, which is onsite construction inspection services.
The need needed for the, what was it, USDA loan?
Uh, no, this is needed for the, not just for that. It's needed for 1A and 1B, right?
Yes.
For the road project. One of them is with USDA and one of them is not. So-
So I'm just looking for a motion to approve that amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve that amendment. It's being paid out of the TIF anyway, so.
Okay.
Yep. I would second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? You're good? All in favor of accepting the amendment to VHB's change order? Please say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Bowen?
So I gotta set Ricky up here because I told him, I told him that he, he didn't really have to prepare anything for this meeting. At our last one, we just, the board had the discussion of capital purchases. And we thought it would be, well, and the board in their wisdom, thought it would be good for Ricky to come in here and just kind of give them an overview of, of what we got and where we need to go.
Did you tell Ricky you were gonna help him set up or you were setting him up by calling him up?
This is me, the setup has happened. He is set up. So I, I believe, so the conversation centered around needing a new grader or at least the thought of needing a new grader.
We talked about, when Chet was here, a grader and a truck were scheduled.
And a truck. So if anybody has any questions for Ricky-
So are we here talking about the truck or are we talking about the grader?
Both.
Okay. So what, do you want to just give us a rundown on the grader? Let's go with the grader.
The grader?
Yeah.
The grader, last one we replaced, it was 14 years old. This one will be-
be fourteen years old. I mean, it's at the point. It still runs well, but, you know, fourteen years old, you might start having some problems with it. It's kind of a crapshoot and you're going to start losing a lot of money on your trade if you, you know, resale on it. So is it about to fail? No, it still runs fairly good, but you never know. So.
So the, the quote.
How many hours are on it, Ricky?
That's one thing I did not bring with me actually, Chris. I've got to look up the hours on that. I can let you know tomorrow if you'd like.
How often do you use a grader?
Yeah, I'm just kinda curious to, you know, see where it's at.
You use the grader quite a bit. It's personally you a lot, right?
I haven't been running it here lately, but yeah, it's got quite a few on it.
In the last fourteen years?
Yeah, it's got, it's got, I'd say, I think it's over five thousand hours on it. I can't remember exactly what. Might even have a little more than that. I think we use it more now than what we used to because we do more stuff than we used to actually.
It's pretty regular use on this road.
Yeah, it does.
Right. So, Michael, can you run by like what the cost of the machine is?
Uh, the call, the quote that we received, the sale price was four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Trade-in value is a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And we're tax exempt. So the total with the trade-in for a new cat is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Are we looking at purchasing or are we looking at leasing, Michael?
I, I, if, I believe, um, Chet's sustainable, uh, I don't wanna speak towards that actually. I just don't know.
How much money is in the fund right now?
Well, I think what we should do, I mean, we have this machine fourteen years. I mean, if we can, you know, look at the original purchase price of the equipment, amortize the expense over, you know, fourteen years, probably did pretty well in, in a sense of that.
Yeah.
But how much do we have in our equipment fund for this?
I, I'm pulling that up right now.
Okay. And then I think we really need to say, you know, like what other capital that we're, we need to lay out because last year we intentionally did not really superfund a lot of, um, accounts as we were trying to keep the, uh, tax rate in the, in the lower, uh, uh, you know, lower percentage.
So Ricky?
Yes.
Um, is this on order, the grader right now?
No, but they actually, it was going to take a while to get one. And then all of a sudden, I guess they had some that became available because I don't know where, they weren't sure where, but a bunch, a bunch of them had been ordered. They backed out actually. So that put us, moved us up in line. It was originally going to be next spring, but it moved it up. So I think they said we could have, it'd be available like in January or December, I believe.
Okay. And then for those, and no.
They said if we, if we decide not to take this one, it's not a problem, but it pushes us back another year at least down the road because it takes so long to get stuff built and everything now.
Chris, I'm showing it here in the room, but the equipment replacement fund has two hundred thousand dollars in it.
And this is how much?
Okay.
Two ninety.
Two hundred and eighty. Two ninety? So you'd have to borrow money.
And I know like one year in the last three or four years, when one of the trucks failed and we came down, I think you were actually out there on one of the heavy ones using this thing to.
We do use it to plow sometimes when we're down a truck.
Yeah.
Now it's a little bit better that we have a spare truck, but I mean, the problem that we're running into now is getting things worked on. It takes forever to get an appointment to get in to see anybody. I mean, it's, you're talking, it's like just to get an inspection on one of the trucks, I can't get it today, second week or first week of December to get one of the trucks inspected. And I just called today. So you're talking a month.
So I wanna say go ahead and move with the unit, but obviously if we only have two hundred thousand dollars in the bank and the unit is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars and next up is gonna be talking about a truck, okay?
Truck, just by, by, by the way, the truck is a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty.
After the trade-in.
What was the truck I lost?
I don't think you worked in the price on the trade-in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a trade-in value.
So the truck's about another hundred thousand dollars plus, okay? So we don't have it in there.
Are you, okay. So my other question, it kinda gets back to a bunch of other stuff when we were looking into it. Um, the truck you're purchasing, is it, you're looking at, I think it's on order if I'm not mistaken. It's not, we're not supposed to get it till the spring.
We ordered the body and the plow and wing and all that stuff. We have a build date for that to go on the truck, but we have not ordered the truck actually.
How long will it take us to get the truck?
They said if we order it now, we would have it probably by the time the build date is. If not, they would just push us back.
And the build date is?
Build date is, I think, I believe sometime in June possibly.
So that's almost towards the next budget thing. I mean, like when we say there's sustainable budget or whatever, I mean, there's only two hundred thousand dollars in there now. We didn't knock it down much from the year before. I mean, for us to buy these two things, we would need almost four hundred thousand dollars, correct? Two eighty plus almost a little over four hundred. I mean, uh, and the budget, how much did we put into that last, the year prior? You have that on your budget form, right?
I do.
Can you pull up what we put in on that line item? My glasses over there.
What?
Getting there.
So the current year, how much did we put in?
Equipment replacement, uh, FY twenty-four budget was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So it was more, it was ten thousand more than the FY twenty-three.
Yeah. So I don't know how we were gonna able to buy it anyway. So can, can we just, um, get what the leasing price is on, on, on?
I can find that out tomorrow.
I don't.
The other thing too is, I mean, if I had, if you wanted to pick one or the other, I think probably right now the truck would be more important than the grader probably.
I mean, could we, could we lease the truck and buy the grader? What were you gonna say? You don't think, what, Chris?
Now, I mean, if we, if I was to make a rec, we should never, I just don't see us leasing a grader. If we put five thousand hours on it and we're just using, you know, unverified numbers, if we did that over the course of fourteen years, dear God, we would take a bath on the, so I don't think that would make sense. But, um, and I think we should own our trucks outright. My question more to Ricky was also going in the fact that, is Ricky, are you good with this truck that Chet talked about purchasing? Do you want another tandem?
Yeah, actually, we're, it would be replacing one of the other tandems and it would make the spare truck become a, become a tandem, which would be good because the spare truck that we have is actually a single axle and that's a two thousand and nine.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that we're buying the, you know, as the fire department picks the pieces it wants, you know, we need a ladder, a pumper, this, that, whatever, that we're buying actually what you want and not what maybe someone else wanted. And, um.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, essentially it's.
No, I just feel like you get the right piece.
Go ahead, Chris. I'll wait for you.
No, I was just trying to say, it's like making sure what you have, knowing also at the same time period as we look, you're gonna have more roadway to cover in time as well. And, you know, with more focus on the Killington Road and as we acquire more roads going into the village, you're gonna have that to take care of for snow removal as well. And I just wanna make sure that we're buying the right piece that you want. That's all.
I, I think so. It's essentially a twin to the truck that I drive. The only thing different on it is I think it's got motorized mirrors and heated mirrors on the fender, which, because they've, they iced up, I, I mean, that's the only thing that's really different. I mean, they've been good trucks. I mean, they're all pretty much the same other than the freight liner. So we've got the same truck and they seem to work pretty well. So.
Do you think we're better off trading ours or do you think we could, alright? Because we used to sell them and our trucks were hot commodities back in the day.
I don't know about, I know, I think you would have an easier time outright selling a tandem. The problem is nobody wants single axle trucks. Not, the demand isn't there like it used to be for those. So, I mean, the, the guy from Trans Eastern Trucks said he could give us a price both ways, what they would give us in trade and then would, so, you know, or they don't care if, if they take it in trade or if we decide to sell it on, on the town, you know, sells it on their own.
I've actually, I, I worked with a company here called Auctions International and they were really helpful on, on getting rid of a tool cat that we had. And we got about ten thousand more for it than we would have with a trade-in by taking it off.
I'm gonna make a motion to move forward with the purchase of the both units. Since one of them is gonna be like June, the, the truck would be June.
I believe he said, yeah.
We got two hu, we got two hundred thousand.
I would like to, you know, move the purchase and maybe move that purchase to, you know, tell them to deliver it in July. So we can get our budget here and we can fix it. And if we're short the eighty grand or whatever on this other unit at this time, that, you know, if you have to borrow out of that, um, short-term loan that we get each year to carry you over until July one or whatever, and then we just have to look at our budget here to make sure we cover everything up. And at the same time, you can take a look at going on to whatever auction site that is and seeing if you can do a little bit better of that. All right? So that's my motion is, go ahead, Chris.
My other, I, before we get to that, I have a couple more, am I, Jim? What other, what other equipment needs are you going to have in the foreseeable future, Rick? That you'd may tax us in this same type of way?
Well, the next big truck to be replaced would be two more years, which that puts us on a ten-year plan. The trucks, which I think for a while it was eight years, but I see no reason why the ten-year plan isn't working just fine. Um, the other thing, the other thing that I really, it's a fairly new machine, but I have no faith in whatsoever is the walkway machine. It pretty much lives in Middlebury being worked on all the time. And I think that down the road, you're going to have to think about upgrading that and getting something else that's more reliable because the walkway, you can't just jump on it with a truck and plow it out. You've gotta have something that you can actually maneuver around there and get between the light poles.
What is it currently?
It's a Bobcat Tool Cat.
That's a.
It's a snow blower for the sidewalk.
Yes. It's just not, it's broke down more than, than it actually runs. So, I mean, I would.
Wrong color.
I would think maybe going the lines of either, they've got them so they're a lot more user friendly, maybe a, a newer skid steer or a mini loader. But, you know, of course, cost whichever one would work better. And I think you would be fine either way with one of those in the future.
We're good for this winter somehow?
We'll make it work.
You'll make it work?
There we can use in backup like we did last year. So.
So I, I've got the motion to move forward. We're gonna have to really look at this budget for the next year and then talk about taking that truck in instead of in June and July, okay? And, or if they'll work a deal that we can take it in June and, I, I don't know, there's something, the first payment may not be made until December anyway. And then when are we saying the grader, Ricky?
I'm not sure. I can, I'm pretty sure he said possibly Ju-, uh, January, I think is what he said.
Right. So the first payment not, may not be until July also, Michael?
When you say payment, do you wanna, like, buy it up front?
Well, you're gonna have to buy it upfront. So, yeah, that's, I'm wrong on that. Sorry, I've been up too long.
Oh, it's okay. I just wanna make sure.
I know as far as the stuff for the truck, like the body and all that stuff, they've worked in the past where they said they would hold off on billing until July. So it actually falls in the fiscal year and stuff.
Okay.
And I know Ma- Mac used to. Now it's owned by Volvo now. So I'm not sure if they will, the private guy that owned it sold the business, but it's worth asking to see if they would be willing to do that. And they might very well be willing to do that.
Yeah, that's why I think we used to take trucks and then not have to pay for it until.
Yeah. Yeah, a couple of times that happened where they would hold off for a long.
So we can, so we can just have that conversation that they're, okay? So I'm just waiting for a second. I mean, it sounds like to me that we have a grader that's fourteen and if we hold off, it's gonna go to fifteen or sixteen if we lose this slot. And then we've got a truck that you wanna get as a backup, as a tandem, because right now.
Well, it would replace Bill's truck and then that way you, Bill's truck would become the, the spare truck, which going forward, when if it happens that you're taking over more roads, you could possibly work that into the rotation and not have to buy a truck to do those, help out on those roads essentially.
And we're looking better at going to ten-year, a ten-year rollover.
I, I don't see why it wouldn't work actually.
Maybe we could push it to eleven.
That, it might.
Yeah. That way we can up a little bit into the budget. So.
Yeah. It's fine. I'll second it.
Okay. On favor of moving forward with the purchase of the two vehicles, please say aye.
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 Thanks a lot, Ricky.
Thank you for your welcome.
Nice hat, too.
Thank you, Ricky.
You're welcome, Chris.
Yep. Fire against is on the Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend.
So in front of you is the staff's FY twenty-five draft budget. This is the first draft. Um, the way this process worked was I sent a blank spreadsheet, well, it wasn't totally blank, but the FY twenty-five column was blank. And I set that, sent that spreadsheet to, um, every department head. Um, so the biggest changes that we have are inside police and fire. So I've invited, uh, Chief Ginther and Chief Montgomery here just to kinda give us an overview of what their needs are.
Here we are. Okay.
So just for reference here, in, in the, in the big file here, that is a trimmed down portion of what they submitted. I also have an original copy of what they submitted there for you. Um, just because I look at the picture holistically in my position. Um, but so I think Whit, you've got a PowerPoint, so I might.
Yeah.
Ask you to go first.
Also, um, Director Gilido from KSR also is here. Can speak to KSR any questions that may be. So, yeah, so when I start, I just did a quick PowerPoint. Um, kind of with the budget, trying to be fiscally responsible, but also find a way to kind of build a department to fill the needs both today and also kind of in the near future. Um, so, yeah, the next slide, what I usually do, I kinda start off, I have assistance or kind of see our mission statement and vision statement and our goals to paint those things. I usually include those when I do PowerPoint.
Sorry, sorry, Whit, I'm getting there.
To have those, to have those, uh, kind of in the beginning of the PowerPoints is for citizens to see. I don't need to read through all of them, but in May, once it pops up. Then I went through, um, and you'll see, I'll go through kind of some recall volume. Has changed and has grown over the years. Of course, our population has grown.
Hold on, Whit. Hide presenter view. Well, we're having, we're having problems here sharing it. But, so if you're in the room, you get to see it.
I'll talk loud.
Okay.
Yeah, Mrs. Matt, something up. You had something up a minute ago.
I know, and then it kicked me out. Well, let me try. I want you guys to be able to see it out there in the world. Share screen.
Mission statement.
Go over the right.
Can you see that, Whit?
Yeah, I can.
Oh. Can you see that, Chris?
Good. You passed the test, Whit.
So if I, if I go to the, if I hide the presenter view, it kicks me out of, uh, let's try it one more time. No, we're good. Hey, you guys can see that? Chris?
Yeah.
Good deal. Good deal. Okay.
Yeah, so our mission statements, you know, it's clearly up there, you know, to fill the needs to, you know, all the people who live, work and learn and visit to our town. We focus heavily on community-oriented policing techniques to promote safety and reduce crime. Will serve with the highest degree of professionalism, dignity and honor, mutual trust and compassion. Will have the courage to do what is right and to stand against what is wrong. Then I talk about the vision statement. It's our vision and goal, uh, for the Killington Police Department to serve and protect our citizens and visitors. We also work in cooperation with our community. We also work in cooperation with our community to proactively address identified areas of needed improvement and to continually provide the level of service and safety so deserved by residents and visitors. We'll also operate as an open, friendly, community-oriented organization as we strive to attain our goals. And our goals, to promote public safety through effective enforcement, education, community partnerships, provide effective current and progressive equipment, resources, technology to ensure community safety through an effective police force, and provide a professional work environment that attracts, retains diverse qualified officers to ensure the highest level of public safety standards and to enhance regional and statewide cooperative programs with regional and state law enforcement. So, Killington, we're responsible for opposite town of Killington, which stretches from, you know, West Bridgewater, Mendon, Killington Road, North Sherburne into Pittsfield. So, it's 54 miles of road, you know, over 3,000 tax accounts. You know, our population swells up to 20,000 plus people on a busy weekend, you know, rural city's about 14,000 people. Just to put that in perspective, we're bigger than rural city on a busy weekend. Again, 2020 census, you see 86% population growth in 2019. With our 25 budget proposal, it equates to about $244 per resident. It does not include the capital for the police department and for search and rescue. The average cost per resident in the other, the other five resort towns in Vermont, about $455 per resident. So, again, trying to be fiscally responsible, but at the same time, get as much coverage as we possibly can. Uh, here are just some quick stats from 2019. This is the call volume. You can see it increases kind of steadily, there's a couple, you know, COVID years, but it steadily, 2023, we have over, since as of Sunday's date, about 827 calls for service, does not include phone calls. This is the, there it is, calls, this is the calls to the office, this is the calls that come into ransom service through the phone. Every call gets returned. As you can see, 2019, we had, you know, a little over 700 and to, as of yesterday, as of Sunday, we have over 1,400 phone calls come in to get returned. This is a total of phone calls and case patrol log. Again, you see a steady growth, steady increase as of, again, Sunday, we have over 2,000, 2,100, 2,100, 2,200 calls of service. That's for, you know, it's for every officer, it's, you know, three of us in the department now and that a lot of calls covered for the personnel they have on. So, a bunch of discussions, I split this up, we can continue on to the K-SAR stuff, we can go on, then do it overall. So, Bob, you wanna feel free to chime in and stuff like that.
Hey, Chris, you're missing the air conditioning here.
So, as you know, everyone here knows, I believe, Killington Search and Rescue came underneath the purview of the police department earlier this year. They've ordered a select board, that's something Director Gilido and I originally back in 2012 have requested and spent some time on its own and spent some time underneath the fire department and since I think made the right move to within the fire, police department's walls. And we have an operations manual, in that manual, Director Gilido came up with the above purpose. An organization shall be named Killington Search and Rescue. K-SAR is a volunteer search and rescue S.A.R. organization under the Killington Police Department in Killington, Vermont. Its purpose is, the primary purpose of this organization is to provide the surrounding areas with a source of organized, trained and certified emergency personnel that are prepared for and respond to search and rescue operations. The secondary purpose of K-SAR is to provide the community with a source of education and outreach for information and instruction in areas related to the search and rescue needs.
Oops, sorry, I got distracted.
This is command flow chart, I'm about to speak to that.
I'll do a little overview on K-SAR, everybody, thanks for having me, my name is Bob Gilido, Director of Killington Search and Rescue.
Hey, Bob.
My background is 20 years in state law enforcement. I was on the Vermont State Research and Rescue Team, have currently an EMT and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I also thank the town for restructuring the team and allowing us to continue on and I'd like to thank the former members and the present members for keeping the program going and definitely Chief Montgomery and the select board. So, just a couple of quick overview about the team. We're under the police department, which statutorily makes a little bit more sense based on the state police, it's under Department of Public Safety. So, when there's a call, we're able to, the police department's able to get the phone call, which goes up to that flow chart, goes to Wit, or it could go to a patrol officer on scene. He can take into that, take that information and be able to determine whether or not the person's missing or if it's just like a, it's called a bastard's search, the person at the wobbly bar and having a drink, based on the interview, it's not really a search where we deploy, but that's up to the police department to find out if there's a crime involved. So, every search is an emergency and they have to determine whether it's a law incident or if it's something that can be remedied without law enforcement. So, but if it is, everything that happens could be, like if there's a missing person, it's kind of a legal incident until it's determined it's not. So, that's why it flows better under the state police, public safety and a lot of times the towns handle it and state police lets them run with it. So, as you know, there's a shortage of troopers, public safety, there, as you saw on the news today, there's a lot of stuff going on in Burlington, they're out straight and they are in charge of search and rescue, so it's gonna come back on the town a little bit more to help and the fire department's surrounding to help with this. So, we structured it this way, so the call comes in to the chief or the patrol officer on scene, it'll get filtered to me and then we have a couple leaders down there that are team leaders that will fill in the, you know, the slots where, where needed. And then they can either deploy people in the field and so forth, so that's how the flow chart goes. You have the chief, director, and then you have lieutenants, you have one, two, three, four, five different people that can either lead a team into, into the field or make that operational decision, depending on how many operational periods you go in. I'll spare you all the, I'll just kinda give you the Cliff Notes, because I know you have a lot to cover here. So, we're gonna be called more and more as, as the mountain expands and this is something that is, very, Keen is very busy over the last six months. So, we started with basically no membership and we brought the membership up to 22 members, which are all volunteer members and the majority of them are all certified, at the very least, wilderness, first aid, V-FER, EMT, outdoor emergency care with ski patrol. So, we built up these certifications, we have a large volunteer group. And that's not to say that you get one call, they're all gonna show up at once, so that's why we've built it up into a couple different task force. So, that's where we are with the team right now, they're certified, they're a deployable team and Wit has a couple of training photos here. This is one service project we did for the Killington Ski Patrol on the backside of Mendon Peak. The Ski Patrol, we have a very good relationship with them. I'm on the Ski Patrol and I asked the director to give us some extra straps and that last slide, went up to Mendon Peak and we serviced the different rescue caches we have on the backside of Killington. Here's a couple different trainings, we have a PAC test to test people's skills and ability and their physical fitness. Up the left-hand corner is a training we did on my property, I have 100 acres out in Pittsfield and the Killington Town Line. The group, this is crime scene training, they had a person that was a sponder of a few days, the team had to deploy their own resources, their own team, split up to figure out what to do and not to touch the crime scene, figure out what calls to make and package the patient. Lower right-hand corner, they're doing some first aid, wilderness first aid training there, shelter building, splinting, so forth. But as we build the team, they need to get a baseline first aid skills to be on the team. So, there's logistics and then there's the rescue component. Right now, most everybody's been through some sort of first aid training certification, the last training is this, the next training is this weekend, the 18th and 19th, and we should pretty much have everybody up to speed, right, Wit?
Yes.
I think we should be in good shape. We had deployments, the state police, actually just reached out to Drew Kleimer, the state police search and rescue coroner, he's coming to our meeting on the 13th, talking about grants, possible grants for the program. That machine there was purchased with a grant from the former team, they did a good job getting that grant from state police. That was used on a, on a search over on No Town, you guys familiar with that, on the backside of Killington and we collaborated with the Vermont State Police and K-SAR actually made the find, found the missing hiker who was deceased, we found it with that machine. We saved them a lot of time, so I'll, I'll switch gears back to Wit. Does anybody have any questions on operations or anything that we do in town or training or anything or membership?
Is there any movement to modernizing with like thermal for drone or anything like that?
Yep, yep, down the road, we, that's a very good question, we're looking at a grant for that, like a thermal, even drone, because you can really seconds or minutes, minutes or hours, right?
Yeah.
You can really reduce the goal of an hour by using something like that. So, we're looking at, but they're very expensive.
Yeah.
It's not in our budget at this time, but we're looking at possibly a grant, talking to state police about it, that would be very helpful and it could also be used for state, for police, you know, interoperability with equipment that we have can also be used for police stuff, too, that's kinda what we're looking at.
So, part of the budget, you know, again, you spend underneath the fire department, they had a line item of, I think it was $5,500 for search and rescue, but they did not include, I don't believe, is the stipends for call, training stipends. So, we tried to do, we tried to keep it, you know, as reasonable as possible, another thing, we had to spend a bunch of money this past year, we still have a couple more things we have to get. There were some things that, that weren't there that were needed, either they didn't come back or they had to be replaced, so I'll leave it at that. So, we took that $5,500, did the 3%, tried to keep as reasonable as possible, we tried to buy that up. Vehicle maintenance is for the four wheeler, we do have a trailer, search and rescue trailer, unfortunately needs to be relettered, there were some letters were partially removed under prior leadership, needs to be fixed up. But the $1,000 was annual maintenance for the four wheeler and hopefully put some money towards that trailer to get it looking proper again. Training, uniforms, equipment, commanding the police department, we wanna make it as professional as possible, so there is some command structure, you know, uniforms, IDs and proper equipment. So, that's where that $5,665 came from. Membership, director stipends, this covers trainings, we wanna try to send a couple more members to EMT training, wilderness EMT possible. Also covers, correctly, Director Gilido is an instructor for wilderness first aid, it covers, be put through like two classes so far this year, we plan to do maybe a couple more next year, so we get everyone up on board with that basis.
Every two years it cycles through, we have to do it.
Right, so it kinda covers that. If there's any wish list, I wouldn't mind adding additional $2,000 to operations portion of the budget. And that's kind of a quick overview of where we're at and where we came from.
I have a question for Paul. Any of the K-SAR members with the fire department also?
There are a couple, yes.
Okay.
All right, so, I presented a pretty large document here in front of the board, so I don't expect us to pick through it tonight. I don't wanna assume what we're gonna do, but I think the idea is just to kinda get a general overview from these departments and then go back and...
So, this is your first budget with the town of Killington?
Yeah.
What we normally would say is they're here to make their presentation, we don't approve anything tonight, you're used to that.
Right.
Paul's not, 'cause it's his first budget.
Yeah.
Because like you had said, you take a look at the whole thing.
Yeah.
And that's how the board looks at it, too. So, they're making their presentation, they got their wish list in there and we'll have discussions later.
Good.
I'd just like to say, 'cause I know, like, one of your first calls that went out was during the July 7th rainstorm and you had to go up to Sunrise condominiums.
Yes, yes.
And there was a gentleman up there that was on hospice at the time and you, you guys brought him up like a backup generator or whatever and the folks at Sunrise had reached out to me about a month ago and they wanted me to reach out to your group, since you're in charge of it, and say that the gentleman did pass away, it wasn't, you know, he, he came here, he wanted to be in his Killington place for that one last summer on hospice and, and the family reached out to say, you know, to reach out to you guys and say thank you so much. It was like the, it was a place where all his family from around would be able to, it was like the middle point at his place up at Sunrise.
Thank you for that.
So, so if you just pass that on to all your folks or whatever.
Fire guys, too.
Yeah, 'cause the fire guys, too, are in on that, so, you know, so, I mean, you know, so, thanks.
What's the call volume been? Um, deployments, we've had like three, four deployments, some stemmed from the summer and then the missing hiker.
Yeah.
A lot of them were geared around that flooding, well, pretty much like all, all of them were geared around that flooding. So, yeah, obviously winter's coming for now, we had a nice, we had a nice base for our...
Depends on the snow pack on the back of the ski, on those calls, because once they go off backside, so with the ski patrol that's called, we're helping them, you know, with the operations and state police, 'cause they don't have a lot of people there. So, that, that can vary, I think there are 10, 10, 15 calls like that for backwater skiers, but a few years ago, we ran an interview for NPR, there was 50 for ice skiers for March. Off Cooper's the same thing every single time, so every year it's different based on snow pack. So, it could be a lot, it could be...
For the first, uh, missing hiker, we were deployed by Lieutenant French, the state police search and rescue team, then the other two were deployed by Killington police for the gentleman at Sunrise and another, another person that needs some assistance.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I told Paul...
Thank you, guys.
And this, everyone knows, just when we do the police side, there's an increase, a lot of the increase, just a couple things we'll go over, but one of them is from the new K-SAR budget now, from the police department. I was talking to Paul, you know, easy was spending his money when it was underneath the fire department.
Yeah.
So, now it's underneath ours, but...
Yes, so in this...
Based on the slide, I see about 6,000, I'm trying to pull back.
Yes, so in this master budget, we've got an increase in this department of about 40,000 and 18,000 of that is because case, well, really more than that, 18,000 plus 5,000 of that is coming into this department from K-SAR and then we've got an extra police officer included and then a raise for the police chief.
There's a, if we stuck to the 3%, there's a 7,700. We went on the body cams and the cruiser cams, for those cams, they require storage, so that storage is annual fee, that's storage, I think it's a $4,000 and something dollars. Then also with that, there is our powered EMS software system, which houses all of our policies as well as a bunch of other forms, state forms and requirements and that annual, there's an annual licensing fee of $3,000 and something dollars, so there's over almost $8,000 on top of the budget increase that was not there last year comes from that. I'll be able to reduce some, I eliminated the line item for, for the special events.
Special events.
I ended up back and forth over the years, past leadership has asked that we bill for special events coverage.
Michael, do we have that on there?
I understand correctly, we're not doing that now.
There you go.
So, I eliminated the special event line of expense as well as revenue on that. What were you doing for, so, used to use powered EMS, what were you using before powered EMS?
Paper.
Did paper?
Yeah.
Uh, powered EMS, same thing state, states on. Yeah, we keep track of it, it's all shared. Who reviewed it, when it was reviewed.
All right, I'll be careful.
Yeah.
In the future, we can just...
It's crazy they're charging that much, though.
'Cause then the people...
I can see it, it's all, it used to be, too.
Yeah.
It spilled in those more.
Yeah. And what's the, is it just the body cam discussion, was it just because that's... State was making, so state police required now, legislature passed legislation that they only could, they spoke to the state police, they're required to, but the LCT credit grant, they're our town insurer, passive, they kind of recommended, kind of recommended pretty heavily that some of the departments start going to. Yeah. So, that was discussion, we got it, we got the body cams through a grant about a year ago and quickly started running out of storage space. And then, actually through Watch Guards Company, we got it, bought them from, we were able to get about $20,000 with the free equipment, we've got two new cruiser cams, which are about $8,500 apiece and we actually got an additional four body cams from the initial four that we bought, so it took care of us for getting on. My old department, the big, requesting for years ago held out from the city because of storage.
Right, yeah.
Storage. A lot of churches spoken about that, that issue. Now, with storage, what also allows us to do the software, we have to redact things, so, you know, you get a Freedom of Information request, we have to redact, you know, citizens' faces, license plates, the software allows us to do redactions, so you don't have to put it out to other companies to do that.
So, I'm sharing, I'm sharing Wit's budget here, it does not, I, this is an older one, I don't have access to the share drive. The, the only thing that's different between this and the one that's being presented here in the room is the addition of the $18,400 stipend for K-SAR and the search and rescue $5,665.
Which we had seen on the previous screen, so...
Yeah, if you look line item by line, there's no, there's a few hundred dollars here and there, fuel is up, they raised fuel, currently have three cruisers, they took the amount and they added for a fourth cruiser for discussions, $11,000, so it's up by almost $3,000 for fuel, those are just real numbers based on what fuel usage has been. I've spoken to Ricky a little bit, I think the fuel meter may be off, so that, that number could be high, it actually might be lower and he's reached out to CBO to come double check the meter on the fuel. But again, it's, you know, there's all, it's a few hundred dollars, a couple thousand dollars here and... dollars here and there.
Kurt, are you looking to make a comment, or are you just, or a question, or, oh wait, no, who's that? S. Is that Steve? Okay, Steve, you've got...
Which thing? Volunteer, if you're talking about CASEAR, CASEAR is volunteer. Probably about twenty-two members that are, volunteer their time. I believe the past group was, got stipends through the fire department. But I don't think stipends are considered a paid position.
Looks like he just wrote something down.
Okay.
He can talk.
Okay. Chief Gunther.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Well...
Thank you, Red.
Thank you.
Well, I guess first and foremost, I want to say that my predecessor here, in this presentation, got me. I put a nice PowerPoint presentation, and I'm recording this all in the papers. You got me this year. So, okay, so as you'll see from the budget that you got there before you, there are some significant changes to the fire department's budget. And those primarily are in the areas of manning, personal protective equipment, and it's the replacement of equipment that we have that is either outdated, broken, or both. So starting with the manpower, as you all are well aware, we just brought on our first three full-time members on shift to allow us to have a person here at the fire station twenty-four seven. With this budget, I'm asking for a second person to be here twenty-four seven, so in effect, we're going to try to hire three more full-time individuals. In addition to that, I'm looking for the full-time equivalent salary-wise per diem. With the idea there, I have the flexibility of bringing in a part-timer to supplement our manpower during peak needs. World Cup coming up would be a good example. The, just the general increase in population during the wintertime would be another example. So there you'll see one large change. Second large change that you will see, let's see if I have trouble reading this.
Well, salary changes is the major jump.
Yeah, I don't have your equipment request on here, but I can put, would you like me to pull that slide up?
If you could.
Okay, I can.
Okay. So a second large area of expenditures that I'm looking at...
Now, this is before I got a hold of it.
This is before our manager got a hold of it. In taking an assessment of our needs here, what I've found is that we have quite a bit of equipment that is either broken or soon to be outdated. First and foremost is our SCBA's, that's our self-contained breathing apparatus. This is a piece of equipment that we have to have to function on the fire ground or to function in any type of atmosphere that is considered immediately dangerous to life or health. Unfortunately, they're a large ticket item. So because of the way National Fire Protection Association standards work, they periodically revise their standards, and as they revise their standards, typically every five years, the oldest applicable edition of that standard rolls off the books. And that is where we're at with our SCBA's. The SCBA's that we currently have are under a standard that in addition to two thousand and two. The standard is about to be revised next year, and at the time it is adopted, the two thousand and two standard will roll off the books. We will then be non-compliant. So my proposal is that we replace all of our air packs. The bottles, actually, which you have listed there, bottles, we're actually in pretty good shape on, so that will be some reduction. The bottles are still in test date. That's going to require the replacement of packs and the face masks associated with those packs. Moving down the list, when I took over the department in July, there was a proposal that had been put forth in regards to purchasing an ATV that gave us wildland firefighting capability and patient extraction capability. So I updated the quote on that, and that is, as you see there, what is proposed. We have thermal imaging cameras with this department. Again, this is a piece of equipment that is vital to firefighter safety. It is vital to the ability for us to timely rescue an individual in a no-visibility environment such as a structured fire, and it's a tool that allows us to look at temperature gradient differences so that we can find hidden fire quickly and allows us to reduce property damage. Two of the existing thermal imaging cameras we have are broken and are not supported by their manufacturers any longer. So replacement cost for those. Moving down, again, there's gas meters, portable radios, and such items that are broken, not supported, and need replacing. So as you can see from all those lines there, this is not really an upgrade to anything. This is simply getting us back to where we were.
Any questions?
Is there any stuff you may be able to get grants for?
I am looking now at grants for the SCBA's. So the police chief sent me the information on that, and I've got a very tight timeline to look at that. So, yeah, so, yeah, that's what I'm doing this week.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Just to give some people some history, the SCBA, the chief is talking about the actual bracketing system and the breathing piece that goes on the firefighter. Those we got in a grant that I wrote, I think, almost twenty, twenty years ago. The bottles were replaced in the last two years, so what he's looking at is stuff that had been talked about, and it's not a surprise, it shouldn't be a surprise to the town. Everything he's looking at is stuff that's aging out. We've done a good job of keeping things, and I support what he's doing.
I also want to note that Chief Gunther brought an SCBA pack with him here, so if anybody wants to see it...
Why don't you just show it to the PEG TV people?
Okay, so, this is one SCBA unit, and it's composed primarily of three parts. Backpack assembly, which Chief Fire mentioned, the bottle, and the face mask. The cost that I'm asking from Cur is to replace this backpack assembly and the mask. Again, the bottles, as he mentioned, are only a couple of years old, so we are going to be able to maintain the bottles. We currently have twenty-six packs in stock. I'm asking to increase that by two packs for reasons of training and also hope down the road we can get a staff vehicle, in which case it may be a pack in that for whoever's operating the vehicle. Any questions?
So how many do you, is it based on volunteer, hybrid volunteers or whatever, or is it based on units of vehicles, or, because obviously you're not going to be going from carrying it around with you all the time?
As you were probably tired of hearing me say NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, because that tends to be our bible on how we operate. Fire apparatus have multiple standards assigned to them. One of the standards requires that there be one SCBA for every seat within a fire apparatus. So when you think about our large trucks, we have six seats per truck. Mini pumper, two seats, tanker, two seats. Rescue, four seats. And then, again, trying to keep a pack back for training purposes or for a spare in case something breaks. And with the hope that down the road we can get a staff vehicle. Here's your numbers.
So you technically could have like sixteen or twenty people on your fire department, but because they can go out to different calls and grab a truck, each one of them has to have a pack?
That's correct. According to the state, there needs to be one per seat.
Because you're on call and you're not going to be going, oh, let's go grab the backpack with it and get it. It has to be in the vehicle already.
Correct.
Okay.
One question I had, Chief, was all of our units are currently out of acceptance and compliance by NFPA, or are some of them, or we have any life left in them, or are they all dead?
So as we stand right now on the calendar, we're all in compliance right now. Everything we have in the bay, in the station, is in compliance. When that changes is next year, the NFPA process for adopting new standards, approximately June, July of next year, we're expecting the new standard will come into effect. As that happens, the current edition of the standard that our air packs are certified under, in effect, rolls off of the standard. It sunsets. And at that point, everything that we have under that standard and that edition is not in compliance. So we literally go from everything being in compliance to every pack we have being out of compliance.
And we know for a fact that they, I mean, if they do this on a regular basis, I don't know.
Correct.
So they, or is it scheduled, or is it they-might type of thing?
No, every NFPA standard is periodically reviewed, either in a three-year or a five-year cycle. With this particular standard, and I've got a handout here I'll provide to the select board members, if they can get a copy to you. The original standard that this was under was called NFPA nineteen eighty-one. Over the years, that changed and became NFPA nineteen eighty-six. There is a new standard that is coming out, the change next year, that is going to be nineteen fifty. The benefit of that for us is, is it has actually delayed this process of the new standard. It's actually delayed it by six months. So as it stands now, whereas we would have been out of compliance, in all effects, probably by January of twenty-four, we're probably going to be fine until late twenty-four.
So nineteen eighty-one, then went to nineteen eighty-four, and now they're going to nineteen fifty? Okay.
I don't pretend to do any of that.
I was going like, wow, nineteen eighty-one, they changed it in three years, nineteen eighty-four, I was waiting for two thousand twenty-four. Oh, it's twenty years since they made the change, but you drop down to nineteen fifty?
Well, the standard numbers are immaterial. The big thing to take out of this is that...
They're changing it.
They're changing it, and there's typically five standards within this standard, or five editions that they allow, and as they adopt a new one, it always sort of rolls off. And that's where we're at.
Still nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty-four, nineteen fifty, whatever.
Chief, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Is, is there going to be any issue in getting those in time, or is it some of that's available, availability's not an issue?
Well, so, as of right now, a couple of vendors I've talked to said that the packs are available. The big question mark is going to be price increases.
Sure.
Because everybody's anticipating large price increases next year.
This is what you made me.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we're looking for grants as well, you said, Chief?
I am. So Chief Montgromrie provided me the information for the state grant through Homeland Security, and it certainly fits the bill. So I'm looking at that now.
Just for future reference, we have an excellent grant writer on staff, okay? And Lisa is awesome at it.
Do you have that in your management's report about...
About Abby or anything? No, I don't.
I would turn that out.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris, it's a Homeland Security grant. She's already covered some police stuff as well as fire, and if they're very complicated. And there's a short deadline on these things. We've done state grants before, like the passive stuff, I can't, I'm not speaking for fire chief, but those we, those we have, pretty well done. We get those, almost awarded every year for us, but this federal one is...
Great.
It's, oh yeah. It's like eighty-nine pages, and then hyperlink after hyperlink after hyperlink. Yeah.
God bless you.
But there's a lot of stuff in there, though.
You think she'd be okay with that?
Yeah, she's a calm people.
All right, so, so my theme for this budget is building capacity to meet the needs of our future. And when you see this budget holistically, like the way I have to look at it, you'll see that we're really increasing capacity. I mean, Paul has presented to you the need of a lot of equipment, but that's kind of, that's an outlier. Everything else is staff. So we needed a new director of public works. We interviewed two candidates and chose one, Abby.
Farmington, Farrington.
Yeah, Farrington is going to join our team January first. She's coming from the state. She's been with the state for six years. She's got tons of experience. She was the assistant town manager in Bethel for quite a few years.
Randolph, Randolph.
Was it? No.
No, it was Bethel. She lives in Randolph.
Yeah. She's going to be an incredible addition to our team. You know, we're increasing our police force, we're, you know, increasing our fire and safety, so...
And when Abby was with the, as the assistant for Bethel, it was during the Irene storm. She oversaw all of Irene reimbursements, worked on all of that. She was also in charge of their water and wastewater.
Yeah.
She held a class-two license for water, and she was involved in writing a bunch of grants. And if anybody's like wondering, like, I've heard that name somewhere else, she was actually the state person that was in charge of the TIF program for VEPSCY. And we just felt like she is the one that we have to go to and give all the answers to at, if she was there. And she knows everything inside and out, and...
She'll help us, she'll help us run a clean program.
She was looking for a job, and we were like, it'd be better off for her to be here if she was leaving out of VEPSCY anyway. And we have a really great team member coming in with all the other team members that we've gotten, including, you know, Bob back there, and Newby, and Paul also, and Michael, being new, so...
A lot of change in the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and people, I've gotten approached by many people, and they say, you know, Dave Lewis used to be able to do it all. And I'm saying, Dave Lewis is an incredible man, but times have changed a lot since then. We, we are bogged down by requirements from the state and federal government, even on the local level. You know, people come here and talk about all this money that's available to us, well, there's a lot of work up front to get that money if we want it.
There's a lot of work to keep, to file the paperwork.
Yeah, and the five-year audits they like to do, and...
That's just town-wide, too, all departments, like, we've got a big work now, the changes every month, every year, seems new. Legislation requires more paid work.
And there, and there's going to be kind of some upfront costs here that are going to be absorbed in the general fund budget that won't be in the future. Like, for instance, we're talking about Abby as the director of public works. You know, her entire wages are being covered in the general fund budget now, but once the infrastructure's in place, a lot of her salary will be covered by user fees, because a lot of her attention is going to be on water and sewer, well, water infrastructure. So, so these costs will reduce over time, but we're, we're at a jumping off point here, and I definitely think we're in the right direction.
We've also have Abby in, and she will be spending a lot of time on the FEMA...
Yeah.
...reimbairments, and she knows how to track her hours, and so a lot of her hours will be repaid by, from the FEMA. Fingers crossed, that's what they tell us. We've had a good history with FEMA in the past, so...
Steve, Steve Finer, you did have your hand up, I saw, at one point during this conversation?
Yes, I do. I just, real quick, in one of the line item you put up, and had the different numbers of the accounts, in number one seventy, it said SVFD Capital. Just from a future logistics, semantics, that name should probably be changed.
Okay. I don't think that's on the newest version. It might have been... It might have been just from Chief Ginther's, but that's good input.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, down the road, I don't want somebody to say, oh, that belongs to the corporation, and no, it doesn't. It's the town's money.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. We're almost there.
Are you good there?
I'm good there.
Is that it for your presentation?
Essentially it.
First round.
Thank you, Paul.
Just one. You did the sign when we first came in. Do you feel the need to do it here?
Mike left, whatever, but I don't know if he's coming back in. But there are some other people. I didn't realize it was on, I'm sorry. I've been busy the last couple of days on personal stuff, and so...
I'm positive, though, just real quickly, I did, through this meeting, travel by the sign. It looks 10,000 times better.
Oh, that's what we were saying, it looks, yeah, it looks good now.
It just, that's what was needed, so, I really think we can, you know, unless someone has any comments, we could probably park it and take it up at next meeting, because I'm sure it's going to be an evolving issue over time.
We did have, we did have a question of content and who approves it?
Yeah, I talked to...
Go ahead.
I spent some time talking to Jim about it a little bit, and I believe that we need to, as a board, come up with some policies of what goes on there, what doesn't. We also have to comply with state law as well, that we're not...
Hey, Chris, Mike Coppinger ran out to his truck.
And he left.
He just said, okay, well, yeah, I said...
He's responding to an emergency call at the Old Butter Nut.
Yeah. For water. Someone doesn't know how to turn off a freaking shower.
I'll just, I'll, I'm sure we're going to want to change the signs that comes in, so if the board's okay, then I'll just, I'll monitor what those messages are, and until we have a policy in place, manage the messaging. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think we could, we could do it via email or whatever, and, you know...
What's that, Patrick?
I think we're pretty, pretty good.
I agree, sorry. I agree, the changes from a couple of days ago to now, world of difference.
Yeah.
The two things that I would look into, and I don't know if you can even do it, is, I know that it needs to be bright during the day so you can see it. Is there any way that, like sundown, you can adjust the, you dim it down a bit if people are worried about it distracting? And then, the other thing, when, if you're starting to think about policy, maybe see if there's a emergency way for like, if wit would need it, or if there's like an amber alert or silver alert, that may be also a good use for that, because other than the highway, there's no, no information I can change like that.
So, I've been, I started on this sign thing, well, we really started on it three years ago, and we got it installed just, I don't know, six weeks ago, whatever?
Hustled.
What?
We hustled.
We hustled. Okay. So, the person that installed, like I had said, did a lot of things, and I gave the email over to Michael today with the person in charge of doing all the changes, so that could be a question that you ask George tomorrow about dimming the thing? I don't know if you, I mean, I don't know, we'd have to see it, because if it's dim, then people may be stretching further to look at it. They may be better off the way it is. I saw it this afternoon, right after, and then I saw it as I was driving here at 6:30, and I'm telling you, it's a thousand times better.
It looks great.
Not having it scroll or colors.
Not having it scroll, but he was just showing us what it could do and what it can't do, like in the small letters, okay? The next thing it is going to do is set up with my fellow town manager is for a class on how to, it will be downloaded onto a computer, the software program. So, it can be changed at any place. So, the town I picture is that we're going to be running the one down the road, okay, with the help of the chamber, and there already is a policy in place that the board needs to approve what goes up on that sign down there, okay? And there's normally, and there is a list somewhere of most of the stuff, okay, that can go on, and then at times, like the resort for special events that are town-wide, like the World Cup, will come to us and then we'll approve it to go on, which we've already approved the World Cup. As far as what Patrick is saying, I believe I saw an email from George today saying that the sign out here may have been put in.
I saw him putting it in when we left earlier.
So, there is a sign that's put in out here in front of, and I would think that what we're going to do as a board is make that so that there's a computer here, fire and police, and this is going to be their sign for change your batteries, set the clock back, amber alert, and then if there is a bigger event and they don't have, then they can, you know, put it out. And I also believe, like, if search and rescue is searching for someone, you know, we're going to use it. The difference with the sign between the one at the bottom of the Killington Road and the one up here, it's not as long, it's just a little bit shorter, but it's not as long, but it is the height, it picks up where you can actually have, we've learned that the one down the block, it's two lines. We can't go to three lines, okay? And this one down, this one coming here, is going to be where you'll see, like what you see down there, good for three lines of messaging. It will be a lot of the stuff like the Fourth of July, you know, it could be, it could be click it or ticket.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays or whatever. So, we'll work it all in, but I think the one that, the intent of the one out here was more for not the events, maybe a few, but more for messaging of, okay?
Last thing here, I'm not, I'm not going to go over this entire document. It's posted online, it's been put into the Mountain Times, I imagine that might continue, so I just want a lot of transparency here on what's happening. I want people to know that the government's working, local government's working really hard for them, so I'm just going to breeze over these categories. Killington Ford Initiative, I've been given this update almost every week, every two weeks, but construction has started for some of Phase One, the water and road project, but really excavation of those projects where you actually see an impact won't start until spring, and then we go out to bid for the next projects in Phase One in the, in the spring as well. So, Town Hall, we did receive second floor drawings from our architecture, and he's given me a solicitation for bid timeline of December, so we're still holding to this June, July move-in date. General Government Operations, we've ordered the radar signs, we're going to put them on River Road, Killington Road, East Mountain Road, West Mountain Road.
You know where that is?
Stage Road, no, West Hill.
West Hill.
West Hill.
We have hills in these mountains, too.
And Stage Road and Barrows Town Road. We've got a driveway application, department heads met for our monthly meeting. Planning and zoning have been really busy, putting together cannabis regulations just in case it gets approved in March. We working on a municipal planning grant, and we've got a trail scoping study, draft alternatives meeting coming up on December 5th, and we ask everybody, join. More information will be in the Mountain Times on scheduling and place of that. We are very glad to welcome Abby on as our new director of public works. Transfer stations looking good. We had a person from the Rutland County Solid Waste District come do a soft inspection, gave us a thumbs up. We're going to apply, we're going to, we're going to apply for a grant to put new signage up there, and most importantly, staff met to strategize the decoration of our tree at Holiday Fest, and the theme will be sweet treats. FEMA, East Mountain, this one's pretty important to know. A base coat of asphalt has been put on East Mountain Road. We were able to replace about seven culverts between Bear Mountain Road and Roundabout, and then I believe all of the patches were fixed from...
It was great. I drove it.
From Bear Mountain down. Okay. So, we can proudly say we met our goal of getting done as much as we could get done to the stormwater infrastructure and getting that road passable.
On East Mountain Road, and we're still attacking the side roads for next spring, because we got them to a point, but they have to go out for design and everything. And at the same time, the resort has taken care of Bear Mountain Road, and the town did work with the resort on the paving since we already had, so they did do some paving, and they have their own bill coming in for that.
Yeah, and that stuff wouldn't have been possible without Ricky and his guys being out there taking care of business, along with Craig Mosher, who really hustled and worked well with us, and Pike, who, you know, came up, came up against a really tight timeline.
Guardrail guys, what are they?
Guardrails up, yeah.
Nicole from...
Nicole Kesselring, yeah. We, it was a huge team effort, and everybody pulled their weight. And then I had quite a few meetings outside of regular working hours, but I won't go over those, and Mr. Chair, that concludes my manager's report.
So, I'm just going to throw in while we're on this here or whatever, we're running an ad in the paper this week, and I'm going to send it over to the police department for their Facebook page, and maybe the fire department, but we're also going to put it on the town website, and it's basically our town logo, and it's like, are you ready for winter? And it's like, before you answer yet, review the winter prep checklist below. Short-term rental registration is required. It gives the link. Registering dogs is required. It gives all the rules. Punch card for trash is required, gives everything. Plowing across, this is big, and Ricky's going to tell you, too, here. He's going to say, plowing across streets, it's not allowed, it's actually a state...
I think it's Title 33161, page 76.
Ooh, wow. Yeah, I had him look it up. All right. Before we put this article together, parking on the street is not allowed on the town roads or whatever. The fireworks are forbidden without a permit, and one of the things we're going to put up on this sign is because, just so everyone knows, that the resort has asked for a fireworks display after the bid presentation on Friday, November 24th, for the Killington Cup K1 Lodge. They did come and get you a permit from you, Paul? And so, we're listening to everyone, we're putting that out there for those that have dogs, and we'll get it out on the screen, but I also would like to get it out on the police page and the fire page and the town. Burn piles are not allowed without a permit, so that's, are you ready for winter?
Nice. Okay.
So, we're into citizens' input.
You guys have anything that wasn't covered? And just Jerry Russell and Noreen.
Jerry, do you have anything else to add?
I don't have anything.
Jerry?
No, not me. I'm going to go out first thing in the morning and look at the sign.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll let you know.
Noreen, you good?
Thank you.
I would say Noreen's good. Okay, and Kurt, you have any questions?
Just wanted to make sure that you have a great vacation, Jim, you deserve it.
Thanks, thanks, Kurt.
I agree, Kurt.
All right, executive session, employee leave accrual. Mike motioned to go in for personal, and I gave you the exact reason, at 8:37 PM.